Thank you for coming to the special town meeting. Our quorum being present will have the meeting come to water and will stand for the pledges of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The clerk advised me that the warrant has been properly served. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the formal reading of the warrant. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed will waive the reading of the warrant. I have nominated Peter Toppen again. I think it's probably rough around 50 or 60 times at this point as the assistant moderator for the meeting and would entertain a motion to ratify that appointment. Any discussion? Do we have a motion first? Motion second. Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous vote. The assistant moderators and the tellers have been sworn by the town clerk. The tellers tonight are Ann Breen, Kylie Storm-Dooly, Irene Murray, Janice DePisa, Linda Plowman, Kathy McGowan, Chris Marachi, Carolyn Stones, Penny Scott-Pipes, and Allison Short. Thank you for helping us with the meeting. This is also a good point. I sometimes forget to do this till the end of the meeting, but I'd like to thank the town clerk. I think people don't quite realize what goes into putting these meetings together. The town clerk has just finished running an election and actually that went into today and certified all of the results. And in the meantime, she's been organizing, she and her staff have been organizing the town meeting. So we want to give a special thank you for how smoothly this all runs. It wouldn't happen without it. At this point, we have various committees who either by town bylaw or state statute are involved in the town meeting and are required to make recommendations to the meeting. So I'd like to introduce those committees. I'd ask first that Elise Russo introduce the members of the advisory committee.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Elise Russo, this year's chair of the advisory committee. I have Connaught Doherty, Jerry Kelly, Dan McQuigan, who was the vice chair, Mark DiCosimo, Patrice Metro, Missy Seidel, and Linda Ferguson. And we are here just to make a recommendation to help you in making your decisions when it's time to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, I would ask the chair of the board of selectmen, Andrew Goodrich, to introduce the board and the administrative staff to the board.
We have our counsel, Tom Harrington over there. We also have Nancy Holt, who is our financial director. Side note, I think she's probably won more awards than Meryl Streep has won Oscars over the years for her town administrator, Jim Boudreau, our vice chair, Susan Harrison. There she is. We also have our clerk, Jamie Goldmore, and we have Karen Conley and Karen Cantfield.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have a report tonight from the capital planning committee. I'd ask Mr. Casia to identify the members of that committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, folks. My name is Chris Casia. I'm the chair of the capital planning committee. Tonight I have Mike Gibson, Ollie Fuhrer, Richard Taft, and I have Janice Lindblom and Maria Fenwick from the school committee, also as members of the capital planning committee.
Thank you. And we also have the community preservation committee, who will make a recommendation under the statute. If Dan Finley could mention those members, I'd appreciate it.
I'd like to introduce the community preservation committee, myself, Dan Finley, the co-chair, Skylar Chick, Suzanne Brennan, Anne Burbine, Jill Caffrey, Mike Connor, Penny Scott-Pipes, Meg Stillman, and Jack Whitaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Just like everyone, I recognize all of these committees put in a lot of time and effort, all on a voluntary basis, and they do a lot of work for us in the town. So let's recognize and appreciate that. Now, we have a number of town employees who have passed since we last were together for a meeting. I'm going to read the names and then we'll ask for a moment of silence to recognize those who have passed. Elizabeth Dwyer, from the high school, Robert Brand, member of the Situate Historical Commission, Jean Magnner, election worker, Andre Farhart, constable, Glenda Page, school bus driver, Robert Clark, school bus driver, and Elizabeth Flaherty, Situate Schools administration. Let's take a moment of silence in their memory. My name is Jim Toomey. I'm the town moderator. It's my job to chair the meeting and decide questions of order. I don't vote on articles or take any position on articles. Let me take a couple of minutes to just go over how the meeting will proceed. The town has two branches of government, the executive, which is represented here by the selectmen, and the school committee. And then there's a legislative branch, which is the town meeting. Each of you is a citizen legislator, and the executive branch boards, whose members are our guests here today, have made requests in the form of the warrant for requesting approval from the meeting. The purpose of the meeting is to allow you, citizen legislators, to review the executive branch requests. You're within your rights as a citizen legislator to question the executive branch, then act upon these requests as you see fit. This is your meeting, not a selectmen's meeting or a school committee meeting. In this work, you have a very important ally in the advisory board. The advisory board is a standing committee of the town, meets all year round to examine any issue that is going to come before the town meeting. They work hard in terms of serving as watchdogs, as a check and balance, and to make recommendations about each article that comes before the town meeting. You should pay close attention to the recommendations of the advisory committee, as a lot of effort goes into that. You have with you, I hope everybody picked one up, the advisory committee booklet, which contains both an explanation of each article and their recommendation on the articles. Summary of the procedural rules we'll follow. Only resident registered voters are allowed to participate in the meeting. All others must sit in the visitor's section to my right. Ordinarily, only registered voters are entitled to address the meeting. I will assume the consent of the meeting if there is a non-resident or a non-voter who would like to speak. If there's any objection is raised, then we can deal with the objection at that time and whether the person should be allowed. That's a call for the meeting. If you wish to address the meeting, the process is for you to rise, to speak. I will wait to be recognized, then to identify your name and address. This shows respect to those present and helps keeping the minutes of the meeting. Speakers who represent a board or a group or a client should describe that relationship as they get up to speak. Any action that is taken by the meeting is taken in the form of a motion. A motion is made and then must be seconded, and no discussion is in order until a motion has been made and seconded. And it is the motion that is the subject of the discussion, and that defines the extent of the conversation for each article. I ask, it's easiest if people go to the center microphone. There are three sets of microphones. If you go to the microphone and stand, we will recognize you. Hopefully, we won't have to worry about this tonight, but speakers on the floor, first time around, are allowed five minutes, and then a second time, they can get up for three minutes, and that would occur only after everyone's had an opportunity, every other person who's interested in speaking has had an opportunity to talk. Again, the discussion, the remarks should be confined to the motion that's on the floor. That is the subject matter to be discussed. Personal discussion, attacks on the motives of people, and discussion of personalities is not in order. If anyone has questions of a town official in the course of considering a motion, they may ask for an answer from the members of the administration who are responsible in that area. They may give you an answer, they may not give you an answer. We can't force an answer. You have to draw your own conclusions from what is presented. Should people tire of debate, if you don't want to suffer any further, you may offer a motion, "I move the question." This is a motion that would end all debate and bring the matter that's before the meeting to a vote. One caution is you can't get up and make a speech advocating for a motion and then ask to move the question immediately after you've made your pitch. So the motion to move the question will only be accepted apart from an argument before the board. On motions, generally, we decide and declare a vote based upon the voice votes. If there is any question about how a vote is declared, seven voters can rise and we can have a hand count of the vote. So if there's a question of the ruling on a motion on voice vote, seven people can rise. Our bylaws specifically allow the moderator to declare a two-thirds vote. Again, if that declaration is in doubt, seven people stand up and question the declaration of two-thirds, then we can have a tell-a-counted vote. I know there's always an issue here of people having difficulty hearing. I think probably there isn't that big a crowd here tonight, and it seems to be a little better listening than it usually is. If you have a problem, let us know. We do our best. The acoustics in this room are pretty tough, so... But if you're having trouble hearing, let us know and we'll see if we can address that. We do our best. Just a reminder, please silence your cell phones, and we also have a wireless microphone should anyone need it. If you raise your hand, we will bring the wireless mic along. And I think that takes care of all the preliminaries, and we will go and proceed with the articles. First, what we have done and been doing now for several years is what's called the consent agenda. And the way the consent agenda works is the selectmen, the advisory committee, get together and take a look at the articles and things that appear to be pretty routine, that are a matter of filling in blanks and so forth in the course of the year, are grouped together and, rather than going through article by article, it's more efficient to treat them as a group and have one vote on all of those articles. Excuse me. The idea here, though, is not to deny anyone the opportunity to discuss any article. So the way this will work, as I will go through, tonight it happens that the first six articles are slated to be in the consent agenda. I will call out each article, and if anyone has any interest in discussing them, has questions on them, just ask, speak loudly and say "hold," and we'll take that article out of the consent agenda, and we'll deal with it separately in the normal order that it comes. So let me go through the articles that are considered for the consent agenda. Again, if you want to discuss any of these or discuss it, simply say "hold" after I identify the article, and we'll take it out. Article one, bills of a prior year, unpaid bills of a prior year. Article two, fiscal '25 budget reconciliations. Article three is a grant match. Article four is a rescission of a borrowing authorization. Article five is the transfer of feasibility study funds for the Heatherly School to the new school project. And article six is transfers to reserves. Since none of those have been held, we will treat them as a unit. I would ask at this time if we could have a motion from the board of selectmen. Mr. Goodrich.
I did want to point out, just want to thank the school committee for coming out and being part...
Oh, I apologize. I skipped over the school committee. We were going to give them the night off.
For all the work. We all worked so well together. I want to make sure that you're recognized. There's so much to do, so thank you. I move that the town vote to take articles one, unpaid prior year bills, two, FY '25 budget reconciliations, three, grant matches, four, rescission of borrowing authorization, five, Heatherly School feasibility study, funds transferred to new school, and six, transfers to reserves, out of order and to be passed by consent in accordance with the motion shown on the consent agenda distributed this evening.
Second? Have a second. We have a recommendation from advisory.
The advisory committee recommends unanimously approving the consent agenda.
Okay. And as we said, there's no discussion because we've decided that we weren't going to hold any of these articles, so I've moved to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? That's a unanimous vote. We will move now to article seven, which is the capital improvement plan. We have a motion for Mr. Goodrich.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $2,850,000 for the capital project purposes listed in the printed warrant and to fund such appropriation. Transfer $100,000 from free cash, transfer $350,000 from Water Enterprise retained earnings, and authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow the sum of $2,400,000 in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter seven and eight, or any other enabling authority.
Thank you. We have a second. Have a second. We have a recommendation from the advisory committee. Mr. McQuigan.
The advisory committee unanimously voted in favor to support this article based upon the fact that these projects are all well-financed in a cost-effective, appropriate manner and are important projects which will improve the residents' quality of life and safety in the town. It was eight to zero.
Thank you. And we have a recommendation from the capital planning committee on the capital improvement plan. Mr. Casia.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Capital planning committee reviewed the four projects. $200,000 was requested in borrowing for the septic loan program, $100,000 from free cash for repairs to the Mordecai-Lincoln property, specifically the cottage. $2.2 million in borrowing for the town share of the Cedar Point seawall, where we got a $5.5 million grant, and $350,000 from Water Enterprise retained earnings for the water meter replacement program. The committee voted unanimously to recommend the septic loan program, the seawall grant match, and the water meter replacement. Those were five to nothing. On the Mordecai-Lincoln property improvements, it was passed with a three yay, one nay, and one abstention.
Thank you. It's now time for discussion on article seven, the approval of the motion to approve the capital improvement plan. Is there any discussion? Seeing no one at the microphones, we'll move to a vote. All those in... This requires a two-thirds approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? It's a unanimous vote. Now move to article eight, the community preservation article. Ms. Conley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That went quickly, didn't it? I move that the town act on recommendations from the community preservation committee pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, the Act, to appropriate the sums of money as indicated for the projects listed in the printed warrant. Appropriations for the items listed in the printed warrant are to be expended first from any existing reserves for the purpose of such item, then appropriated from community preservation FY 2025 estimated revenues, with any excess to be appropriated from the community preservation unreserved funds. All such sums appropriated are further to be expended, subject to all of the terms and conditions of the applications regarding such projects filed with the CPC. Number one, $100,000 for the Cushing Trail Phase Two from recreation. Two, $17,000 for Situate Beach's bike racks, also from recreation. $55,000 for the Situate Bike Way feasibility analysis, planning, and conceptual design from recreation, and four, $75,000 for the Mordecai-Lincoln property assessment from historical resources.
We have a second. Second, we will now ask for the recommendation of advisory.
There are four proposed projects in front of the advisory board tonight from CPC. They were presented by the chair earlier this fall. We found all four requests to be in compliance with the tenants of the Act and within the ability of the funds. The advisory board was particularly interested by the efforts of the committee to lay the foundation for future grant funding eligibility as seen in the Mordecai-Lincoln property and the Bike Way feasibility study requests. The advisory committee recommends approval of the article with a unanimous vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. And last but not least, we'd ask for Mr. Finley to tell us the recommendation of the community preservation committee.
Do you want me to say this word?
Next, that'll be next. Mr. Finley.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Before I go into the four applications, I'd like to thank the select board and the advisory committee for their review and approval of the proposed projects. I'd also like to thank the DPW and its members for their work on these projects, which quite often doesn't get recognized. And lastly, I'd like to thank our administrator, Andrea Gillis, for keeping the committee together. Thank you. We received six applications this year. We vetted the applications and approved four. There were two other applications that were withdrawn after further vetting and may come back next year. But the four projects that you heard include the Cushing Trail restoration, which is Phase Two. It was voted for $150,000 two years ago. The quotes for the work on that project came in significantly higher, so this is for an additional money to cover what the quotes came in for, so we can get this project done. This is a trail between two neighborhoods near Cushing School and the junior senior high school, and the pavement is in dire need of repair, and this is to fix that trail that goes between that, that joins the two neighborhoods and the two schools together. The quotes were received, and we think the additional $100,000 will cover any additional cost to the project. I'd also like to note that Morse Engineering has volunteered a donation of $20,000 in services to help with the project as well. The second project is the Mordecai-Lincoln facility assessment. This was a request from the Mordecai-Lincoln Property Committee to fund the assessment for the entire facility and to put a plan together of what to do and how to manage that facility moving forward. They will be hiring historic and restoration professionals for preservation and restoration of the property and the content of the property, and this may include historical architects, structural engineers, and experts in historical buildings. The project will include the physical assessment of the buildings as well as an application to the National Historic Register, and the funds will be used to develop a historic site master plan for guidance and use of the management of the property. The third project was Situate Bike Racks. This is basically a project for four beaches to have permanent bike racks installed near the beaches, near the parking, near, close to the beaches, and this is a request from the Situate Beach Commission for funding the purchase and installation of those bike racks. You can see what they look like in the handout, and they will be permanently installed at Egypt, Minnetonka, Peggity, and Hummerock. And the locations and installations were all supported by the Situate Bike Commission, the Recreation Department, as well as DPW. The last project approved is the Situate Bike Way feasibility analysis, planning, and conceptual design. It's a request from the Situate Bicycle Committee for development of a plan and design for townwide bike routes. With the increased bicycle use in town, we believe such a plan is required to secure future state, future state and future federal grants. The analysis will result in a route feasibility assessment, a route phasing plan, and conceptual cost analysis. The project will include public input, and the goal is to provide the increased bike ridership in Situate with improved safety, connectivity, and an appropriate infrastructure. There was a quote received for $42,500 that was received from Waterfield Design, and the additional funds requested to cover any increased costs that may arise. In closing, I'd like to thank the taxpayers in town who provide most of the funds for these projects, as well as you, the voters, who approve these projects for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finley. Ms. Conley.
The select board voted unanimously in favor of this article.
Thank you. Now ready for a discussion on the four items recommended by the community preservation commission is their discussion. Gentlemen at the center mic, we get the... We'll bring a remote over to you. I guess we don't have a remote.
Wayne Ross, 42 Chittenden Road. I would like to speak in favor for the completion of the project for the Cushing Trail between the Arbor Way neighborhood and the Cedarwood neighborhood that also helps access the new junior high school and the high school. We initially voted that the September town meeting in 2022, and we still have most of the school year, well, we're nearing the end of 2024, but we have the entire year of 2025, all of 2026, and more than half of 2027 before the... entire year of 2025, all of 2026, and more than half of 2027 before the new school's built. This pathway is in dire need of repair, and not only is the asphalt and the surface terrible, it's out of specification for anyone in a wheelchair. I would ask the people of the town to see the value in this trail and for it to pass it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen at the center mic.
Bernie Westerveld, 12 Harborview Road. I'm curious why the quotes came in two-thirds higher than the original bid? Was that a motivation?
Can we, do we have a response to that question on the increased cost?
The original estimate was just to pave it. When they get out there, they found out that you couldn't just pave it, you actually have to rebuild it. And it is not handicap accessible, so there's a lot more work to be done than just putting a layer of paving and repaving the path.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the Community Preservation Article? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. It's a unanimous vote. Next article is Article nine, which is an amendment to the South Shore Regional School Agreement and the way that debt is paid.
I move that the town approve the amendment to the South Shore Vocational Regional School District Agreement among the towns of Abington, Cohasset, Hanover, Hanson, Marshfield, Norwell, Rockland, Situate, and Whitman, Massachusetts, a copy of which is on file at the town clerk's office.
Second. Have a second. We'll next ask for the recommendation of the Advisory Committee. Ms. Ferguson.
The Advisory Committee voted unanimously to approve this. Basically, it's going to recalculate how the debt share is done, more equitably, more as sort of a pay-as-you-go. The current schools would be done on a four-year rolling average. Doing four years helps to prevent any volatility should you have a huge enrollment one year and a low one the next. And then when Marshfield has a four-year rolling average time, they would be done the same way. In the meantime, Marshfield would be done by their percentage of the students enrolled for that year.
Thank you. Further from the Board of Selectmen, also. Is there any discussion on the amendment to the South Shore Regional Agreement? Hearing none, no one's at the mics, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? No. It's a unanimous vote. Moving now to Article 10. Article 10 would make an amendment to our bylaws on the licensing authority. We have a motion from the Board of Selectmen. Ms. Canfield.
Good evening, everybody. I move that the town amend the town's general bylaws, Section 10240, as shown in the printed warrant.
Second. Have a, have a second. We have a recommendation from the Advisory Committee.
Advisory was in favor of this unanimously, eight to zero. The change, as I noted in the comments, really just good housekeeping for the most part. The pragmatic change is the ability now of the Select Board to delegate the authority for issuing licenses. How this shows up in the real world is you have some people who come before the Select Board, let's say an event planner, who's always getting the same license for the same venue over and over and over again, rather than have that be an additional time burden on the Select Board. When appropriate in a situation like that, they can delegate to, say, town administrator to say, "Can you approve so-and-so?" They're getting that same license again for that same venue. And we're in favor of this.
Thank you. And I would also note, this has been reviewed and approved by the Bylaw Review Committee. Their vote is on record. Is there any discussion on the licensee bylaw revision? Seeing no one wanting to discuss this interesting topic, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. It's a unanimous vote. Next is Article 11, Consumption of Alcoholic Beverages on Town Property. Ms. Campio.
I move that the town amend the town's general bylaws, Section 30120 dot point A, as shown in the printed warrant.
We have a second. We have a second. We have a recommendation from Advisory Committee.
Hello again. This one, again, pretty basic housekeeping. The old language technically said any drinking on public grounds is illegal, and then never went on to specify unless you have a liquor license for that fair in town or whatever. So without that in there, technically, anyone would have been breaking the law at any kind of event in town that had a liquor license on public property. So this fixes that and clarifies it. We voted in favor of this, eight to zero.
Thank you. I would note again that the Bylaw Review Committee has reviewed and approved this amendment to our bylaws. Is there any discussion? Gentlemen on my right.
Pico Fonasenko, 303 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. I just had a question. Makes perfect sense to me. No problem with the article. But is there a reason that there's no addressing new amendments to state laws relative to marijuana on public grounds and public use? And why it doesn't specify that that can't be done in town as opposed to just alcohol?
We have a, Ms. Canfield for the Board of Selectmen.
That's a really good question. This bylaw is pertaining owning to alcohol licenses, and marijuana is not permitted in this town for consumption. It's already in, I forget the actual bylaw.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further questions or discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? No. It's a unanimous vote. Next article is Article 12, again, amending the general bylaws on finger-based criminal background checks. A motion?
I move that the town amend the town's general bylaws by adding a new section, 30191, fingerprint-based criminal background checks, as shown in the printed warrant.
Second. Have a second. Recommendation from the Advisory Committee. Mr. DeCosmo.
Good evening. This article would amend the general bylaws in order to protect the public health and safety and welfare of the town residents by requiring fingerprint-based criminal background checks for certain licensed applicants. Applicants for these licenses related to specific occupations, e.g. hackney and livery drivers, ice cream truck vendors, dealers of secondhand articles, and pawn dealers, will be required to submit to fingerprint-based criminal background checks by the police department via the Massachusetts State Police and FBI. In this process, the police department will evaluate the results of the return from the fingerprint testing and give that to the specific licensing authority. Licensed authorities may deny licenses if background checks reveal concerns, but must allow applicants to challenge any discrepancies. The fee for this is $100 per. The Advisory Committee voted unanimously eight to zero to recommend this change to the bylaw.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Questions? Hearing none, we'll move to, gentlemen coming to the center mic.
Bernie Westerveld, 12 Harborview Road. Is there an annual recurrence of this fingerprinting?
We have a-
I have discussed this with several people, and they tell me that in all the towns, they have to submit their fingerprints every year.
Yes, it's annual when you renew your license.
I don't see that in the proposal.
When you have to renew your license, you have to go through the whole background check again, so it would be annually, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? No. It's a unanimous vote. And last but not least, we have Article 13, which deals with the civil service and the fire department. We have a motion. Mr. Gilmore.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. I'll be brief. Motion Article 13, Remove Firefighters, Fire Lieutenants, Fire Captains, and Deputy Fire Chief from Civil Service. I move that the town revoke its acceptance of the former Section 48 of Chapter 31 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, voted under Article 41 of the warrant for the 1937 Annual Town Meeting and any amendments thereto, and its acceptance of the civil service laws of the Commonwealth insofar as the same relate to the civil service status of the positions of firefighters, fire lieutenants, fire captains, deputy fire chief of the fire department of the town of Situate, so that the positions of firefighters, fire lieutenants, fire captains, and deputy fire chief of the fire department shall no longer be subject to the provisions of Chapter 31 and the rules and regulations relating thereto, except such revocations shall not affect any civil service rights which have come into existence between the town and any employee of the fire department as a result of the original acceptance of the civil service laws.
Second. Have a second. And we have the recommendation from Advisory, please. Ms. Russo.
The Advisory Committee unanimously approved acceptance of this article. You may recall that we did this with the police department last year, and my understanding is that that has been a success because it's enabled us to have access to more applicants, qualified applicants. So, given that and the fact that the fire department supports it, is why we voted as we did. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on the Article 13, the motion. There being none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? No. It's a unanimous vote and declare the meeting dissolved.